I want the meeting to order and I see please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we're going to ask Ms... The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public comment. Those residents who wish to address the council must be residents and/or taxpayers of the City of Danbury. With that, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council? I just want to remind the public, you must address the council about an item that's on the agenda tonight. Mrs. Waller. We'll get to you, sir.
My name is Mrs. Waller, 83 Highland Avenue in Danbury. I just had questions today. Number four, Charles Ives Manor. I was curious why we're appointing two people to say people. I'm sure you have good reasons, I just don't know what they are. The other one is for the reserve fund. I read through the paperwork since you're kind enough to post it and said, was curious, why is Danbury borrowing the money or receiving the money, I guess I should say? And it's coming through the Danbury Education Foundation? Why are they handling funds for a homeless shelter? I'm not sure I understand the logic behind that. And my last question is about the Rosehill Bridge. It's number... Number nineteen. I went through the paperwork on that and I noticed there is a tremendous difference. I'm not arguing with it. I cross the Rosehill Bridge every single day and so I'm concerned about it if it is in bad shape. But how did we go from ten thousand to one hundred and thirty-one thousand in the estimate on having to fix it? Because of public utilities, I'm not sure what public utilities go under that bridge. And I just want to make sure that it isn't coming out of the water or sewer fund to fix it, but it's actually coming out of road money. So I thought I'd ask those questions. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thanks. If you don't hear those answers in the discussion, Antonio, you can always ask him after the meeting.
Okay, thanks. Congratulations on your work.
Thanks, I think.[229.51][229.51](Laughter). And, sir, you had your hand up. And then, Mrs. Mitchell, I'll get to you next.
I have an agenda, I don't need an envelope.
Just need your name and address for records.
George Campbell, I don't know.
Thank you, duly noted and I get your sense of urgency. We'll get right on that.
Thanks.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Every year when anybody does budget, I get my budget wish list out from nineteen eighty-nine, as you all know. And I looked at problems in eighty-nine and said, "How are we doing?" Those problems were drugs, public property mess, litter, colonies of illegal aliens, housing and welfare misuse and fraud, abandoned vehicles, inadequate storm drainage and street commissions, and inadequate law enforcement. Although I think there'll always be ongoing problems, I think we've made a lot of improvement on a lot of them. Some of them where I live are worse because we're putting more and more people in houses than ever before. But I hope you have funding in various things in the budget that will help address those problems because those are very important to me. As you might know, the East Ditch is also very important to me. And I've noticed that again in the capital budget, the money has moved forward. So now the two million that we need for construction costs in this capital plan program, improvement program, is out there in FY ten and eleven. And like Martin Luther King, and I'm not sure I'm going to get there with him, but I really hope that you will continue on this plan and not let it drop off because I really think you have to have an infrastructure in your downtown area. And I realize that it's always a real big feat to get the projects and the money to go together. I know that's a problem. Now, you have number five, the Architectural New Ward on your agenda. And I'm sure you realize that in nineteen eighty-three, Danbury was enrolled on the National Register of Historic Places on Main Street. At that time, all the Main Street property owners were given this booklet so they'd know what was expected of them. I was very surprised when we got a bright yellow building downtown that sort of made it all sign on the front of the building. But I hope that you'll consider in this committee that you're forming, including facade and signage and all those other aspects, other than when a new building committee comes up, that you'll look at all those things in your plan. I have one more I wanted to speak on and I believe that number is called number twenty-one, which is the BRT Brookside. I understood that the tax deferral was not going to be rescinded, that we had no grounds to rescind it on. But I did also understand that had we charged taxes, three hundred thousand a year would go a long ways to shutting me up about the drainage and getting some other projects done. I have some questions about how many residents are going to be in each unit if that would meet our codes. I have questions about the number of parking places that are actually on-site and if that meets our codes. I have some questions about whether BRT is being held to the same standards as other landlords. And I really have concerns that there's mechanisms in place so that it won't turn out to be Animal House Number Two or something. I remember what I was like when I was in college and my mother would not have recommended me. So, uh...
I find that hard to believe.
Thank you very much for listening and keeping it up. I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Well said. Mr. Tissolet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Just in case you need an address.
I'm sorry. For the minutes, Joseph Tissolet Jr., 161 Main Street. And Main Street is actually downtown, is why I'm here, addressing item twenty-one on the agenda tonight, the BRT tax deferral. Today, I read Attorney Pinter's legal ruling. And this is certainly not a criticism of Attorney Pinter, who I've practiced with and in the same town with for many years. It would however shock no one that if we called five other attorneys, we'd get five other opinions, all of which would be different and none of them would probably bear any resemblance to each other. And that may not be a bad idea in this instance. It would shock me if we went back and reviewed the articles and the newspaper, media, that was printed and distributed and disseminated when this project was originally approved. The purpose of the tax deferral was to build market rate housing as an economic driver for our downtown. And as someone who lives on Main Street, it's a good place to live. And I personally am a big fan of market rate housing and housing in general in our downtown. I don't necessarily agree that we need to give away three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of taxes every year to do that, but the spirit of the concept is there. That said, a dormitory is not an economic driver for anything other than happy hour. Wasn't that long ago that I was a student? I recall not having a lot of money, not spending a lot of money, and moreover, the concern for a student is not to contribute to the neighborhood, it's to get an education, it's to develop a life, it's to grow as a person. It's not necessarily to contribute to your immediate neighborhood and the economic development of that neighborhood. I don't think this meets the spirit of the plan. And if there's a way to avoid this and remove the tax abatement, I think that would be better. Despite, and the thing that most concerns me as a resident of downtown, is the simple fact that this was not designed parking-wise for dormitory. Anyone who thinks that college students will park at Westcon in the garage and walk to this building is deluding themselves. Again, it wasn't that long ago that I was a student and students will park anywhere they can find a place to put their car, which unfortunately will mean the White Street Plaza, Dunkin' Donuts after they close, streets, other people's driveways, other people's parking lots. And unfortunately, I think this is just going to create an impact in that neighborhood. It was not designed to serve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Mr. Webber.
I'm Andrew Webber, 117 Grand Island Road, Danbury. And I'd first like to address number twelve on the agenda, the phone cell use by city bus drivers. I found it kind of rubbed me the wrong way that the council would consider putting a committee together to address an issue that's already being addressed by state law and is also a secondary offense, which our police officers can't pull individuals over for. So I thought it was kind of a waste of energy to address something that we have very little control over. And second, I would like to address number twenty-one, tax deferrals of the BRT Corporation. College students at Western Connecticut City University would be a tremendous boost to the economy downtown. Whether or not it is their intention to help our economy, they are young business individuals and young professionals that will walk to and from their car, as well as a shuttle bus that will be making stops there, that travel both to the midtown and west side campus, that work and function quite well. And there is not any issue with overcrowding with a new parking garage, both for the commuters and individuals on Way Street. And bringing that amount of people right into the center of downtown would be a tremendous boost to local restaurants and local shops because a lot of the kids that do live on campus, even though they can't park there, they do not have automobiles and a lot of them do walk. They will find jobs there because it is close and they will walk down through Main Street. And that's what we really need to do to rejuvenate local Western and the kind of botherments. Some townsfolk don't trust local college students. I know it is kind of a risk. A lot of them do party, but I understand the proposal, it's...
You don't have to party.
No, I don't party. I don't like it. That's why I'm here.[884.51][884.51](Laughter).
You go to council meetings.
So I just wanted to address that. I think the tax deferrals will be perfect because overcrowding is an issue at Western Connecticut that does need to get addressed. I myself tried to live there. I lived in the parking garage for two weeks because I was in a Ford's Triple, living out of my truck. So please do everything you can to get students down to the center of Danbury. Thank you.
Mr. Brontes.
Helena Brontes, 12 Fenton Road in Danbury. The reason I'm here today is with regards to item number twenty-one, which is your BRT tax deferral assessment on Crosby Street. Never in the history of Danbury has a deferral of assessment proposal been prompted by the mayor and appointed, approved by the city for housing purposes. I have been part of a previous administration that ensured the retention and growth of quality jobs, that sustained individual and family living and benefited the overall economy of our city. I want to put on the record that I oppose the use of deferral of assessment for housing purposes, which only serve to benefit the housing developers. We need to bring more business into the area and the way to do that is to give deferral to businesses, not to housing developers. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, I got you next. You can't be on your own show here. Smile.
Good evening, Ivan Austin, May 2, McPhill Road. I would like to first say that I would like Mary Tyshoe to have a speed recovery. She represents my ward and I want to make it known that we miss her very well and she's a hard worker. And, okay, item number six, donation to Danbury Cert Program. I am a trainer for the Cert team. And I would like to say that I actually don't know what is going on with the Cert team. And I don't know if you remember, we had a situation with Purple Tower, what is it, about a month ago? And the Cert members that actually came to help us at Ives Manor, they were from Reading. And I know that we have an active team here in Danbury and it was quite boggling and sad to me that people had to come from Reading to help us out when we have a Cert team here in Danbury. I don't know if the Cert team is active or not active. I haven't seen moving well. So I just want to make sure that the Cert team is very beneficial to this city because we need it and it's a good program to have. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
I'm James Kelly, 19 Country Bridge Road, Danbury, Connecticut. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the common council, for the opportunity to discuss item twenty-one. Council members, the battlefield betray. Did you read this? It's your even betray, oh. Common coun... The council, the corporation council group, meet with the common council, subcommittee, council meetings. And I know how many went on with item twenty-one, but I would guess probably in the honor of a dozen. The council's job is to write in legal ease what you guys are talking about. Middle-income market rate housing for families. They didn't do that. They didn't do that. They heard it, they heard it, they heard it, it was in the paper, they heard it, but they didn't do it. Why? Why did they end up saying apartments, one hundred and fifteen unit apartment housing? That was it. Well, one hundred and fifteen unit apartment housing doesn't buy it when BRT says, "Well, we really can't, the market's changed, we really don't want to put in market housing, we want to put in dormitories." The state will pay us sixty-eight hundred dollars per unit for dormitories. I've got no complaints about Westcon. I do have a complaint about this administration and the whole idea of money being deferred, ten point two million dollars, when we have a budget that we'll see tonight that has great needs, great needs. So where is the blame? The common coun... The corporate council are all smart people. They don't make mistakes like that. There's four of them, five of them, I think. I think that the common council, the agreement to defer, the terms in that was dictated by the mayor. I believe that the terms to keep that flexible for BRT was determined by the mayor. BRT needs market flexibility. You know, he never knows what's going to happen. So he got it. So now we've got a situation where market flexibility could bill after prison housing for sex offenders.
Mr. Kelly.
That would be appropriate for...
Mr. Justice, Justice Counsel.
That would be appropriate for the property as is described, one hundred and fifteen unit apartment building. Sex offenders? Westcon would probably be a really good option, but that's not the point. How did it happen? I would ask you to make a motion to enter into the minutes to agree or to defer. You want to read that. You don't want to go blindly on, and it's not the council's fault because we are conditioned to listening to common council. Common council says, common council goes to the meeting, common council, common council. Every evening meeting we've ever had in subcommittee, it's not your fault. It could be overlooked. It was overlooked by you, it was overlooked by common council. But I'd say look into it. We might not have the agreement to defer, we might not be able to pull that back, but don't let it lay here. Do something about that. The... This is ten point two million dollars. Elderly, taxes, education, you're talking about an awful lot of money that just now seems to be dividends in BRT's hands to build whatever he wants. Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council? Seeing none then, we'll move on with our regularly scheduled portion of our meeting. I'm not sure if we call the rolls, let's make sure that we call the roll. So the clerk, please call the roll.
McVan. Nagrashaw. Johnson. Trembetta. Caladrino. Perkins. Visconti. Chinise. Esposito. Sadi. Havo. Vasso. Rattello.
Here.
Diggs. Tysholz. Insopas. Riley. Saraceno. Seaberry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Stanley. Tabarzak.
There being nineteen present, two absent, let the record reflect that Mrs. Tysholz is ill and undergoing treatment. And Mr.? Eighteen, eighteen absent, three, eighteen present, three absent, right. Mrs. Tysholz is undergoing treatment. Mr. Caladrino had a death in the family. And Mr. Johnson, Mr. Cal... Is out of town in business. Thank you. There's, I'm going to do the announcements first before we do the budget address. There's just several quick announcements that I want the council to be aware of, events that are coming up. Specifically, the Ancient Order of Hibernian St. Patrick's Day Parade starts in the Warmore Parking Lot promptly at 2:00 PM. Please be there a few minutes before because we do like to step off on time. There's also a flag raising here at City Hall for St. Patrick's Day and that'll be on the seventeenth at noon out front, in front of the atrium. And again, please try to be on time for both events. Just as that, we have a number of birthdays this month. Councilman Vasso turned eighteen this month. Congratulations on March the third. Councilman Trembetta's birthday is March thirteenth. Happy birthday, Councilman. Councilwoman Stanley turned twenty-two on March twenty-fifth, coming up. Councilman Riley's birthday is on March the twenty-seventh. We have two anniversaries. Mr. and Mrs. Stanley's wedding anniversary was on March third and Mr. Johnson's wedding anniversary is on March twenty-third, twenty-two years. Okay, at this time, we'll begin the budget portion of the address. Mr. President, honorable leaders and members of the common council, Madam Clerk, city officials, department directors, employees, and my fellow Danbarians, in accordance with my duties as mayor and those prescribed by the Charter of the City of Danbury, I respectfully present my proposed budget and the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2007, 2008. But before I begin my budget details, let me say thank you to the legislative body of our city, the common council and its leadership. Our council spends hours working on the city's business in a voluntary capacity. And in the coming month, they will be giving up their evenings and weekends to deliberate over this body of work. For their dedication and commitment, we should all be thankful. And of course, our thank yous would not be possible without recognizing our Director of Finance and Personnel, Dina Diorio. Dina has spent hundreds of hours poring over these numbers with the aide of her capable assistant, Judy Barris, and has been able to create a first-class document that all of us can be proud of. Dina's work is outstanding in every way. I also want to thank Dina for all of the years of hard work with the City of Danbury and all of her dedication. She has left a lasting legacy for our city and I know that all of you here in the council thank her and wish her well in her new position in North Carolina. Okay, like today, many of us wish we were going to North Carolina with her, but you know, each year, our city budget has earned awards for its presentation style as well as its content. I'm sure that this year will be no different. So, Dina, thank you and I know the City of Danbury will miss you and will miss Robert in the years to come. My friends, as in the past, the City of Danbury stands on strong financial footing. Danbury continues to maintain the highest credit rating and bond rating in our history and we continue to have one of the lowest effective property rates in the state of Connecticut. I would encourage you to review the graphs and charts that are included in your budget. In particular, I'd like to point out our low debt service rate and our strong fund balance. Both of these numbers continue to remain healthy and strong. The City of Danbury's mission is to ensure a superior quality of life for its citizens by providing the most cost-effective municipal services while preserving the cultural, historical, and natural resources of the city. We are committed to working with citizens to enhance Danbury's position as a premier place to live, work, and raise a family in a traditional yet progressive environment. The mission statement defines and drives our decision-making process in the City of Danbury. Last year's budget reflected our core mission. In addition, each of our departments was asked to develop their own mission statement that connects back to the city statement. And this way, our mission is clear and the flow of communication down to our departments is seamless. This year, the 2007-2008 budget continues that commitment with the introduction of performance measurements in the city's budget presentation. In a separate section of the budget, you will find logic models for a program or service for each city department, which is designed to assist managers to focus on what they want to accomplish and how best to reach and attain their goals. Our 2007-2008 budget reflects careful planning and an eye towards the future. This budget targets three core areas that have been the focus of our attention over the last several years. Specifically, public safety, education, and public works are the focus of our spending plan. Most important to our mission statement to the quality of life in the City of Danbury is the delivery of public safety services. On May ninth of 2006, our city made a decision on funding for a new police station and funding for much-needed public safety, technology, and equipment. station and funding for much-needed public safety, technology, and equipment. The police station will be seventy-five thousand square feet and will include all of the ancillary uses that are required of a modern-day police department. Most importantly, the new police station will be equipped for centralized dispatch for police, fire, and EMS. Planning is moving forward, and we anticipate a June groundbreaking for the new building. To complement the delivery of these services and the new police building, the two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget has a number of improvements to the Danbury PD. The capital budget includes funding for fifteen new vehicles for the police department and increased funding for training. Finally, there is the issue of operations within the police department. Last year, Chief Baker presented a strategic plan for the police department that would reflect the needs of growing a diverse community in the twenty-first century. Chief Baker and Deputy Chief Shanahan called their plan Vision Two Thousand Nine. This plan is comprehensive and is thorough. It reflects and updates recommendations from the strategic plan developed in nineteen eighty-three for the police department by the International Associations of Chiefs of Police. These recommendations were never implemented by prior administrations. Vision Two Thousand Nine analyzes staffing levels, equipment, sworn officer training, traffic enforcement, and quality of life enforcement. Over the last ten months, both the city and the police union have been engaged in negotiating the impact of the new table of organization. In anticipation of a positive outcome of those negotiations, the two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget funds Vision Two Thousand Nine. This plan prioritizes increasing the minimum manpower by adding fifteen more officers over the next three years. The police department continues as a priority of my administration with a twenty-one percent increase in funding in the past four years. Vision Two Thousand Nine, when fully implemented, and we will complete, when we complete the new headquarters, nearly two dozen more officers will be patrolling the streets with increased manpower and reassignments outlined in Vision Two Thousand Nine. The May ninth vote also included funding for the West Side Fire Station. The two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget funds ten new firefighter positions to fully staff the new fire station. A new fire pumper, engine number twenty-six, will arrive in late April for the use in the new station. The building will be completed this summer, and we will anticipate a dedication of the building around Labor Day. This project is the first major expansion of the Danbury Fire Department in over a generation. Finally, we are making improvements to the delivery of ambulance services in the city. The two thousand seven, two thousand eight operating budget includes funding for increased staff during peak hours, as well as a new computer system for electronic ambulance call reporting. This new system will improve patient care by improving real-time transmission of clinical data. This investment translates into a forty percent increase in ambulance services for our community since I conducted a competitive bid for Pan Ambulance Services several years ago. Education. Education spending continues to be one of the main drivers in our budget. Our Board of Education has asked for approximately a seven point one percent increase in their operating budget. Education spending over the last five years has increased by twenty-two point four percent, and this year is no different. I am proposing an increase to the Board of Education of six point one percent to one hundred and six point one million dollars, or approximately six point one million dollars more than last year. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not mention Governor Rel's bold initiative to place more resources in education. This spending plan puts all of the ECS increase that the government has proposed right where it belongs, in our public schools. And finally, let me emphasize that we are excited about the future of education in Danbury. This past fall, the New Western Connecticut Academy of International Studies opened to rave reviews. It provides a state-of-the-art educational experience for our young people. In addition, Broadview Middle School renovations are complete, and Rogers Park Middle School renovations will be completed in a matter of months. The Robert Saville Replacement School will begin construction later this summer. Indeed, Danbury's children are poised for academic success with new facilities, and we are thankful to our taxpayers who understand the economic benefit of quality schools and an educated workforce. The two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget reorganizes and shifts resources to focus on the quality of life issues that are critical to the health of our neighborhoods. The spending plan is important to our mission statement and ultimately to the delivery of services to our residents. Two years ago, I introduced to the Common Council the Livable Neighborhood Plan. The plan focused on three core areas. Specifically, we developed a department called the UNIT, our Unified Neighborhood Inspection Team. Secondly, we proposed a Danbury Neighborhood Bond, which was adopted by the voters in November of two thousand five. And finally, we proposed a number of initiatives within the oh-five, oh-six operating budget relating to the improvement of our neighborhoods. Last year, I expanded the organization to a full-time status. And over the past year, the UNIT has been very successful at improving the quality of life of our neighborhoods. This year, I've increased, I've increased funding for the UNIT to allow the team to perform more inspections, hold more community forums, and engage in more neighborhood planning. In addition, earlier this year, I introduced City Line Three One One. The Three One One line allows residents to call a single phone number to get answers to frequently asked questions, request service, or obtain other information. This budget includes funding for a full-time Three One One operator who works in the direction of the UNIT Neighborhood Coordinator. Having City Line Three One One be part of the Office of Neighborhood Assistance allows us to take a comprehensive approach to quality of life issues. And finally, City Line Three One One will give us vital information to measure our performance, how well we're helping our residents, and help us determine where best to allocate valuable city resources. With the retirement of City Engineer and Public Works Director Bill Buckley and the hiring of Antonio Aridrola, I asked Mr. Aridrola to review the operations of all the departments that report to him and develop a strategic plan that does several things. First, I wanted to improve delivery of critical services to our residents. Second, I wanted to improve maintenance programs, particularly in our Parks and Recreation Department. And third, I want to develop a management plan to implement capital improvement projects that are ongoing and develop organizational plans for future capital projects as we rebuild the city's infrastructure. And finally, I want to develop strong internal controls for city assessment projects and develop a strategic plan to reduce backlogs of those projects. We are reorganizing roles and functions of each of the departments. Tonight, I'm presenting a sweeping reorganization of this department. Highlights of the new reorganization include the creation of a new Public Services Division to include park maintenance, forestry, equipment maintenance, and highways. These four divisions will be led by the Public Service Superintendent and will allow for a more coordinated approach to the delivery of these services. In addition, a new division will be created entitled Public Project Construction and Administration. This division will have sole responsibility for the execution of the city's capital projects and will report directly to the Director of Public Works. This will leave the Engineering Department with responsibility for permits and land use reviews, GIS mapping, public utilities engineering, public projects design, and traffic engineering. By segregating public project design from project management, we can ensure the most efficient execution of key projects that will be getting underway this spring and future projects that are waiting for funding. This reorganization will provide enhanced focus and direction as we seek to implement the various bond issues that have been approved by our voters over the last two years, and it will provide additional supervision and better management of our public works departments as a whole. Our sewer and water funds are beginning to see positive cash positions after three years of gentle rate increases. This year, I am proposing no increases in rates to either the sewer fund or the water fund. And for the first time in recent memory, we are also adding a second crew to address water main breaks and to support ongoing maintenance issues in the water system. I am also proposing no changes to the current connection fee structure that's in place. Due to the increasing pressure on our senior citizens relating to the rate increases in electricity and escalating costs of heating and cooling our homes, I'm also proposing a tax credit to be used as energy assistance for our seniors. The new program grants a property tax credit of two hundred and fifty dollars for single residents and three hundred and fifty dollars for married couples. In addition, the income level for qualification for energy tax credit has been raised to fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars for single residents and fifty-eight thousand dollars for married residents. Because of higher income guidelines, for the first time, we'll be touching a whole new group of people who are on fixed incomes and need assistance and help in paying their energy bills. This proposal is fiscally responsible and will provide real relief for those seniors who have to make a decision between heating their homes and buying their groceries. The General, my mic's set. The General Accounting Standards Board, commonly referred to as GASP, has added a new accounting standard that requires cities and towns to begin accounting for something called other post-employment benefits. These benefits are the retiree medical insurance benefits that the City of Danbury provides for each of its retirees for their lifetime. In Danbury, our actuarial has calculated that this unfunded liability to be around seventy million dollars. The oh-seven, oh-eight budget begins to account for retiree medical costs by creating an OPEB trust fund that will be treated similar to one of our pension funds. This important public policy decision begins saving for this unfunded liability, unlike government's previous pay-as-you-go manner. And this year's contribution to the trust fund will be one point two million dollars from the city. Question is, why should we fund OPEB? Well, credit rating agencies and bond rating agencies have indicated that they will judge the creditworthiness of cities and towns by whether or not they fund OPEB and by the strategic plan they have in place for future funding. A reduction in our bond rating will result in the city paying higher interest rates and costing taxpayers more money. While OPEB is a significant unfunded mandate which negatively impacts our mil rate, we must fund our obligation to our retirees so that we are well positioned in the future to meet this challenge. The two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget provides for several unique initiatives regarding capital improvements in our city. Specifically, the program allocates seventy-five thousand dollars for the completion of Richter Park's master plan. Over the last several years, Richter Park has struggled to compete in the marketplace and has had discussions about the future of Richter House and of the golf course. A comprehensive master plan will allow the Richter Park Authority and the city to strategically plan improvements and to develop a long-term vision that embraces the arts community and enhances recreational opportunities. Our Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan also allocates two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the White Street Streetscape project scheduled to start construction this summer. It also allocates a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk repairs. It allocates one hundred thousand dollars for repairs and improvements to Rogers Park's fields. It allocates one hundred thousand dollars for paving and for ongoing drainage projects. The two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget is full of change and improvements and reaches to attain the core values of our mission statement. The impact of these changes to our taxpayers is minimal. This year, I'm asking our mil rate to be set at twenty-two point two zero. This represents an increase of less than one percent. With this general investment, we will now have expanded public safety services with more police officers on the street, more firefighters to battle emergencies. Fully fund the Board of Education's budget, responsibly fund our OPEB obligation, and provide meaningful energy assistance to our seniors. Our spending plan calls for no increase to sewer and water rates. Our spending plan is a mission statement that reflects a progressive, forward-thinking city that serves our residents. Our budget gives us a mission statement that reaches down to our city departments and connects with our citizens, and now includes logic models to set goals and to enhance performance. The two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget gives us a plan for strong management and strong accountability, a plan that gives us clearly defined goals and vision that each of us can be proud of. It has a realignment of the Public Works Department and funding of the Police Department reorganization plan that reflects the growing needs of our community yet saves the city valuable tax dollars and resources. It has a senior energy assistance program which will help our seniors address the escalating cost of energy. Our Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan enhances the quality of life by improving our sidewalks and our streetscapes. And that is what our city is about, and that is what we'll be working to implement for the next fiscal year. So tonight, I ask for the council's cooperation as they deliberate over the spending plan. Our finances have never been stronger, our outlook has never been brighter, so let's work together on a bipartisan basis to keep Danbury moving forward. And with these thoughts in mind, Madam Clerk, I respectfully submit to you this budget for our oh-seven, oh-eight fiscal year. Thank you for your attention. God bless America and God bless our great city. Thank you.
We are gonna stand down for about five seconds while we move these screens out of the way and let the council get settled in. To council, we'll now move on with our regular portion of our meeting. Mr. President, minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the clerk's office.
Second. Made the second by Councilman Vasso. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, deletions, or changes to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Madam Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent calendar for March sixth, two thousand and seven. Four, receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Donald E. Whedon, Anthony J. Pisano, Stephen J. Greenberg, Lisa Trembetta, Paul Sirous, Michael Osborne, G. Corey Anaim Wright, Francis M. Herbert, and J. Fernando Jimenez to serve as members of the Charles Zyp Authority for the Performing Arts. Sixteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden to make application to the State of Connecticut for the acceptance of locust funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to renovate one memorial drive in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to replace underground fuel tanks at the Public Works Complex as outlined in the City of Danbury's Capital Improvement Plan as recommended by the Planning Commission. Seventeen, receive the communication and authorize the resolution, authorize, and approve the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden or his designee to apply for and accept funding from the Missouri Foundation in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars for the homeless shelter. Eighteen, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Education in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to support youth and family counseling. Twenty-two, receive the report and authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to accept the conservation easement as previously negotiated by Corporation Council. Twenty-four, receive the report and take no action at this time. Twenty-five, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to remove items four and sixteen from the consent calendar.
Items four and sixteen have been removed from the consent calendar. Any, by the second on the consent calendar. Made the second by Councilman Visconti. Any discussion about the consent calendar as presented with items four and sixteen removed? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, out of order.
Ordinance and resolution. An ordinance making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eight, and a resolution levying the property tax for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eight.
Pleasure, counsel. Councilman Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing, please.
See no objections, so ordered. Madam Clerk, out of two, please.
Ordinance. An ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for public improvements in the two thousand seven, two thousand and eight capital budget and authorizing the issuance of five hundred thousand dollars...
That's a man anticipation.
Five, yeah, five hundred thousand dollars and bond of anticipation, no specific cities need set appropriations.
You have your pleasure, counsel. Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing.
See no objections, so ordered. At this time, I'm gonna ask counsel to get your pencils out. I'm gonna appoint the budget committees. Can you give me a minute? Are you ready? Okay, general government one. Chairperson will be Mr. Seaberry. That'll include Mr. Kasumpis, Mr. Cavoe, Mr. Sadi, and Mr. Perkins. It's general government one. If they go too fast, I'll... General Government Two will be Councilwoman Vasso as chairperson. That'll be Councilman Trembetta, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Ruttello, and Councilwoman Tavrisette. Public Works. Chairperson will be Councilman Kasumpis. It'll be Councilwoman Stanley, Councilman Nagasheth, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Sheenies. Education. That will be Councilwoman Saraceno, Councilwoman Stanley, Councilman Riley, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilman Visconti. Health, Housing, Public Safety, and Social Services. That will be chaired by Councilman Trembetta. That'll include Councilwoman Vasso, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilman McMahon... That'll include Councilwoman Basso, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilman McMahon, Councilman Esposito. Grant Agencies. That'll be chaired by Councilman Riley. That'll include Councilman Cavoe, Councilwoman Saraceno, Councilman Negasheth, and Councilman That'll take the... Please look towards your chairperson in terms of scheduling the meetings. We're looking to schedule many of the budget meetings in the week of the twelfth, just to give the council head us our best to timing of such things. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Resolution. Downtown Special Services District.
Mr. Kasumpis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am moved to adopt the resolution establishing the annual tax relief for downtown special services.
Second.
Made seconded by Councilman Basso. Any discussion about the downtown special tax service? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk, item four, please. It's a reading vote.
Appointment to the Charles Ives Authority.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Donald E. Whedon, Anthony J. Cassano, Stephen J. Greenberg, Lisa Trembetta, Paul Sirous, Michael Osborne, G. Corey Anam Wright, Francis M. Herbert, and L. Fernando Jimenez to serve as members of the Charles Ives Authority for the Performing Arts.
Made seconded by Councilman Seaberry. Any discussion? Councilman Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Either through or to the chair, I'm not sure I should direct this question to, considering the mayor, as the mayor appointed the individuals in conjunction with Westcon, as to what the criteria was for determining those who would be appointed to the board aside from, as well as those, both in the city and Westcon side, if you know Westcon side as well.
I do, but I do reserve the right to be corrected by the Director of Finance relating to the specific criteria. But the city side appointments, their main emphasis was on two things really. A, was there business acumen and their ability to craft a business plan and a transition plan that will be effective. And B, their effectiveness in terms of fundraising and their contacts within the business community to be able to generate the funds necessary to drive the operations of the authority. Those are two of the highest priorities when looking there. The Westcon appointments, I believe the ordinance spoke to one person from the Business Department, one person with an arts background or theater background, and one finance person. And so, Dr. Schmader filled his positions accordingly.
If I may follow up, you know, looking at things in a bipartisan manner, what stood out for me was that the only individual who is not an unaffiliated or Republican is from out of town. And I know there's not a resident or electoral requirement in the ordinance, but that just struck me, and has no one expressed interest, any Democrats or other individuals from Danbury where we don't have to go out of town, a sign, I think, from an individual who has some institutional knowledge of the authority previously.
Yeah, both of the individuals that I appointed from out of town had an extraordinary amount of institutional knowledge, and we didn't want to limit the talent pool just to Danbury. The Ives Center is a regional facility, and if it's going to be a success, we've got to appeal to broader boundaries than just Danbury. However, I've had a lot of inquiries from residents that would like to participate one way or another, and so there's two ways they can do that. One will be to participate in the five oh-one C-three sister organization that'll be a fundraising arm, much like we have Friends of Terry Wow, Friends of the Library, we'll have a Friends of the Ives Center. In addition to that, we are going to be presenting an ordinance change in April that would add three alternates onto that, and again, trying to broaden our base and broadening our fundraising capability because obviously fundraising is a large part of going on this board. And certainly, we look for opportunities with interested parties, regardless of party affiliation, it's not really a consideration, with exception of minority party requirements.
Thank you, Your Honor, for those responses. And while I certainly hope that this works, I've had concerns with this entire proposal from the beginning, which I've made quite clear. And these individuals, I know several of them are dedicated individuals, I wish them the best, but my concerns still remain, the whole process doesn't sit well, or the whole idea doesn't sit well with me, not the process, but the idea. And as such, I'll be voting against these appointments. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for the discussion. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Mr. Sadi the Negative and Mr. Visconti and Mr. Perkins the Negative. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Request for Ad-Hoc Committee Architectural Review Board.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item fifteen to an ad hoc committee. Oh, excuse me, five, I'm joking. Number five, including Corporation Council, Planning Director, and a representative from the mayor's office.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilwoman Diggs, Councilman Caladino, and Councilman Rotello. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Dear coming council members, the City of Danbury lost a special member of our community on January thirtieth, two thousand and seven, when Eleanor Loretta Bartram, a lifelong resident of Danbury, passed away at the age of eighty-seven. Eleanor was the proud and, was the proud and oldest active member of the Glen Apartments Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. CERT members are certified in CPR and first aid as a part of their training. Eleanor embraced her volunteer work and was proud, and was the proud recipient of the Presidential Service Award in recognition for her service to the Danbury Retired Seniors Volunteer Program. The Bartram family requested donations in Eleanor's memory be sent to the Danbury CERT program. Please accept the following donations in Eleanor's memory and transfer the amount of one hundred and seventy dollars to line item twenty thirty point fifty-two, fifty-three, twenty-two Civil Preparedness Conferences. Marks in Real Estate, three Sharon Court Befall, one hundred dollars. Kenneth and Elizabeth Evans, seven Parkwood Terrace Drive in Danbury, fifty dollars. Joseph and Marvell Sorboi, nine Court Concord Street, Danbury, twenty dollars. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Negasheth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donations and transfer the monies into line item twenty thirty point five-three-two-two and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Made seconded by Councilman Visconti. Any discussion about the donations? Mr. Rotello.
Yeah, I find a, not specifically about the donations, just like over the Congress man, it's, it sure plays a strong culture. The public health is, um, that, that, you know, I, I pray it will, I'm sure that last fall, we're there.
Got a nice plaque for me, too, I might add.
Thanks very much. Like, like, to say, please, you, the mayor of the private park. And anything that this body can do to assist, certainly, this communications that are very hard to be working here today, and they can't necessarily afford our members, anything you can do to, 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 to take strong, good, good, okay.
Well said, Mr. Rotello. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Permission is requested to accept donation, a donation of a K-9 vest valued at eight hundred dollars from Vestadog of Connecticut Incorporated. This donation was used in conjunction with the previous approved funds from the students at Great Plains Elementary School so that K-9 Britta will be outfitted outfitted with the state-of-the-art equipment and better able to serve the community. Alan D. Baker, Chief of Police.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Saraceno.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation of a K-9 vest from Vestadog and send a letter of thanks to both the organization and to the children at the Great Plains School.
Made seconded by Councilman Cavoe. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll, Mr., Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, if I might ask a question of the chief concerning this.
Please proceed.
Um, chief, would, would it be possible for Britta to visit the children at Great Plains Schools so that they can see their donation in action? Thank you. Really nice.
Thank you, counsel. Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Dear mayor, about and members of the common council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for performances by both the cellmates, which is the senior center band and the senior center chorus from the following. Glen Hill, twenty-five dollars. The Garden, twenty-five dollars. Maplewood, twenty-five dollars. Almost Home, twenty-five dollars. Please accept these donations and transfer the above one hundred dollars into line item five zero zero two dash five six zero one off the supplies. Thank you, respectively, Susan M. Tomato.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Cavoe.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and accept the donations totaling a hundred dollars and put them in item, line item five zero zero two five six oh one and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Second.
Made seconded by Councilman Basso. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
The new voting machines required under HAVA, Help America Vote Act, and approved by the Secretary of the State have arrived. We would like the permission, we'd like permission to donate the old voting machines to the local schools and dispose of any remaining machines. Please feel free to contact us should you require any additional information.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Basso.
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and approve the, and approve the donation of the old voting machines to local schools and dispose of any remaining machines. Thank you.
Question's been made and seconded by Councilman Cavoe. Any discussion about the voting machines? Mr. Sheenese.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think we're being a little premature at this time to actually get rid of these old machines, given the fact that we're going into a new voting system that has not really been tested. And, you know, given what is done in the past, there could be a lot of problems, and there could be a possibility of actually going back to these old machines and just to give them away, or it could be a little premature. So my question is, again, how much does it cost to actually store these machines?
Mr. Palanza, do you have any information about the storage space of the machines?
There are other questions regarding fair market value of the machines if we were to sell them.
Your Honor, councilmen, we're currently storing them with one of the local storage companies, and I think it is in excess of about a thousand dollars a month. That's in the registrized budget, and I'm not exactly sure what the, what the total cost is per year, but it is quite costly.
Hold on one second, counsel.
I guess the other question is, do we have like a fair market value on the, these machines were worth if we were to dispose of them?
No, sir, I don't have that at this time.
As far as here, what does it mean by disposing? Does that mean selling or scrapping?
I believe the registrars are going to give them to the schools for use by the schools.
The remaining machines to dispose? I don't know what that means.
I think they're going to look for, for organizations that might have need of them, that could use them.
But we don't know what they're worth at this time.
The answer to that question.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we get the proper answer to these questions until the next meeting, at least.
This was made to table and seconded. I don't believe there's debate on the motion to table, Mr. Sadi. It's been a while since we had one of those. Mr. Sheenese has done his, um, we'll just, we'll, uh, we'll debate, right? At this time, there's been a motion made by Mr. Sheenese to table this request by the registrars to donate the voting machines to local schools and then dispose of the balance per the federal law. A yes vote means you support tabling, support Mr. Sheenese's motion to table. A no vote means you do not support the motion to table, but there, we still have to vote on the underlying main motion, the ones that are there. So at this time, all those in favor of voting yes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all, all opposed to tabling, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, could the nays raise their hands? Yeah, let's do a roll call. We're going to be doing a roll call, though. Just as a reminder, a yes vote means you support tabling this per Mr. Sheenese's motion. A no vote means you want further debate and discussion about this issue. We haven't voted on the main issue, the main motion yet, so.
McMahon. Nagasheth. Trembetta. Perkins. Visconti. Sheenese. Esposito. Sadi. Cavoe. Basso. Kello. Diggs. Kasumpis. Riley. Saraceno. Seaberry. Stanley. I have ten to be, ten yes?
Yes, yes. Motion carries, ten yes. Item is tabled. Item, Madam Clerk, item ten, please.
Request for Ad-Hoc Committee, open time. Request for Ad-Hoc Committee stricter traffic control.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman McMahon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send this to the Director of Planning and Corporation Counsel for thirty-day report.
Thank you, Councilman McMahon. We will be referring this to an ad hoc committee with reports from Director of Planning and Corporation Counsel. Our ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Cavoe, Councilman Negasheth, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item eleven, please.
Request for Ad-Hoc Committee establish new ordinance.
With your pleasure, counsel. Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following, following. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Caladino, and Councilman Rotello. Item twelve, please.
Request for Ad-Hoc Committee cellphone use by city bus drivers.
With your pleasure, counsel. Mr. Trembetta.
I'd like to refer to Corporation Counsel for thirty-day report.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Item thirteen, please.
Request for Sewer Survey, Ralph's Drive, Greta Drive, Selbret, Briar Ridge.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Cavoe.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to Corporation Counsel and the Director of Public Works for thirty-day reports, please.
Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Item fourteen, please.
Request for Ad-Hoc Committee Applebee's Water and Sewer Rate Reduction.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to recommend this for ad hoc consisting of the Corporation Counsel and Director of Public Works.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilwoman Basso, Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Sheenese. Madam Clerk, item fifteen, please.
Request for Sewer and Water Reynolds Road from the Sterling Construction Management, L.F.
Councilman Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item number fifteen to an ad hoc committee, including Planning Commission for thirty-day report and Director of Public Works.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Negasheth, Councilman McMahon, Councilman Esposito. Madam Clerk, we're going to handle item fifteen. You want to just keep going, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. And item fifteen dash one, also, I would like to make a motion to send this item to an ad hoc committee.
Ad-hoc committee? Okay, go.
Including, again, the Planning Commission for thirty-day report and Director of Public Works.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Negasheth, Councilman McMahon, and Councilman Esposito. That's the same committee twice. Sixteen through eighteen were consent. Madam Clerk, yep, excuse me, item sixteen was taken off consent. Madam Clerk, item sixteen, please. You can just read the, just read the, yeah.
On or about March first of each year, the city is eligible for state LoSiP funds. Common council approval is necessary in order to make applications, application for these funds. Attached, you will find three resolutions for projects in the total of budget...
Attached, you will find three resolutions for projects in the total of budget five hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. These items are part of the city's capital improvement plan recommended by the Planning Commission. The common council is requested to approve the attached resolution at the March two thousand seven meeting so that we may move forward our application, applications to the state. Please contact me should you have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Saraceno?
Uh, first of all, Your Honor, point of order, um, do the three resolutions have to be, um, submitted separately?
Um, generally, we don't on low SIP applications. Um, there is, while, you know, we have a point of order on the floor, there is a replacement resolution. There's a typographical error in the first resolution relating to the One Memorial Drive. That facility is not going to be used as the office for the Recreation Department. We are renovating the offices there, but those are, are gonna be used for the Danbury Veterans Council. So there was, uh, a replacement resolution that you have in front of you, just so you're clear as to what we have there. But generally, no, the resolutions don't have to be adopted individually.
Further discussion? Mr. Visconti? Oh, uh, excuse me. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, all right. I'd like to make the motion that we receive the, uh, communication and that we approve the resolutions uh, that call for the City of Danbury to apply for and receive funding to, um, from the State of Connecticut under the low SIP, uh, program in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to renovate One Memorial Drive, in the amount of two hundred thousand to replace the underground fuel tanks at the Public Works complex, and in the amount of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for repairing city sidewalks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seconded by Mr. Riley? Discussion. Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question on sixteen dash three for the ninety-two thousand, excuse me, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for repairing city sidewalks. If this comes about, do you have any type of a plan of which sidewalks will be done? Being that we have discussed Lower, Lower Main and South, that are really in need of some new sidewalk repairs, especially where we have a senior citizen housing.
Turn to wall and ward five, just for you, Freddie. Actually.
Next question.
Actually, um, that particular area, South Main Street is a state road. Uh, we are currently in the grand process to, uh, to have a combination of federal funding and state funding to do that, just like we did North Main. But generally, these areas are prioritized by the Director of Public Works, the Highway Superintendent, and the Sidewalk Inspector. Obviously, each individual is responsible for their sidewalk in front of them, so these dollars are used for city-owned sidewalks in front of city property and city district. Councilwoman Tabersek?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Probably, um, to you, if you don't mind. Are these funds available for this budget year?
These are the oh-six, oh-seven low SIP funds that, yes, they're available for this fiscal year, but they're not in the budget I presented to you tonight. That has the oh-seven, oh-eight low SIP money. Those funds aren't available to, uh, spring of two thousand eight.
And, uh, one additional question, uh, either, um, through you to anyone who might have the answer. What is the total cost of renovating One Memorial Drive expected to be?
Uh, Mr. Ayderola, I believe, did a walkthrough recently of the facility. Tell him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, common council members. Uh, I did walk the facility, uh, almost a week ago with our, uh, Public Buildings Superintendent. The building is actually in very good shape. We're, uh, we're looking at doing some ADA compliance, uh, parking lot renovations, and, uh, it needs a brand new roof and some other minor modifications. So I am working right now on putting together an estimate, uh, with a consultant to help us understand what other mechanical needs the building may have. So, uh, within the next week or so, I can finalize my estimate.
Then, uh, through you, I, I might ask, well, how did we arrive at this number? There was, um, five hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars in low SIP money and two hundred and fifty-seven, five was set aside for One Memorial Drive. That was set aside for what reasons?
I, I believe the original intent was to subcontract all the work on this facility.
And you believe it will cost this amount?
I believe that with that money, we should get very close to renovating the building and I should know for sure whether or not we can complete the entire project based on the needs that the Veterans Council will have.
Thank you.
Further discussion related to item sixteen? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Items seventeen and eighteen were on consent. Item nineteen.
Resolution, Rosehill Avenue Bridge.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Saraceno?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we receive the communication and approve the resolution that allows the City of Danbury Engineering Department to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, local bridge program in the amount of five hundred thousand dollar loan and seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollar grant, uh, for the reconstruction of the Rosehill Bridge.
Question made, seconded by Councilwoman Basso. Is any discussion? Sheen Easton?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was mentioned again through the public speaking portion of tonight's meeting, and so the question would be to either the Public Works or Engineering. In reviewing the actual application, we didn't, I did notice that the projected cost for utilities relocation went from ten thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Can you explain why there was such an increase in costs?
Sure. What I'd like to do is just explain a little bit about how the local bridge program works. We prepare a preliminary application to actually get our project accepted into the program. So the preliminary numbers that you see to the left of sheet nineteen dash three are numbers that were estimated without any design. Basically, it is a, um, cursory review of the project, the anticipated scope that's gonna require to execute the project, again, with no design drawings. Uh, and those numbers were done in two thousand and one. So I believe at the time that we looked at the bridge project, we anticipated what would be a typical, uh, utility relocation cost of about ten thousand dollars. As we completed the design and have actually, uh, now, uh, gotten bidding documents, uh, what we found is that there's a, uh, water main that needs to be completely relocated, uh, which is worth almost about forty-five thousand dollars. And there is a sanitary sewer which needs to be, uh, relocated because of the deep foundations, which is worth about eighty-six thousand dollars. And, um, with these design drawings and, uh, taking into consideration, uh, the escalations that happen between two thousand and one and our present time, that's really where the increases come into play. And, and actually, what I like to point out is, uh, if you look at the right-of-way cost, we originally estimated almost fifty thousand dollars for right-of-way cost and after completing our designs, uh, we're able to really, um, reduce those costs almost fifteen thousand dollars. So some of the costs go up, some of them come down, uh, but they are truly a function of having a complete design.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Rotella?
The overall number isn't, uh, uh, it's, it's, you know, within ten, fifteen percent. Sure. We, um, we've been working, uh, really close with the business owner, which is directly adjacent to this bridge relocation. And, um, our intent is, during the preliminary stages of work, to keep the road on an alternating one-way, um, traffic pattern. But when we actually set the structure, there will be a period of time where we have to close the road. Uh, we are trying to minimize the impact, uh, uh, to the adjacent property owner and, uh, we've made an agreement with him that we would always keep his business traffic, uh, you know, accessing his, uh, uh, his building. Uh, without his business traffic, uh, his deliveries, we pretty much shut him down. So, uh, honestly, it's taken us almost, uh, three months to develop a staging plan uh, to execute the project, uh, which would really keep him in operation.
Please proceed.
I, I think it's probably gonna be anywhere between four to five weeks. And it all depends on how well, uh, the construction project or the placement of the structure goes, but it should be no more than five weeks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rotella. Further discussion? Mr. Visconti? And then Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for my own benefit, uh, to the Finance Director. What is the loan request of five hundred thousand dollars? What does that represent?
The loan portion represents a portion of the project that we don't have the ability to fund internally and because of our restriction in our charter that we can't take on any debt over five hundred thousand dollars, we would be in a position, assuming that the ordinance was passed by the council, to take on this loan without having to go to referendum. If we wanted to finance the whole project through a bridge loan through the State of Connecticut, we would have to go to referendum.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item twenty, please.
Illegally parked cars.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Cavill?
Your Honor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication from the Corporation Council's office and authorize your office to enter into discussions with the police union on the feasibility of, uh, being able to do this.
Question made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Is any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess just a point of clarification. At the last meeting, I did request us to go to an ad hoc committee as well. And to, uh, Councilman Cavill, can this be in conjunction with that ad hoc committee?
And Mr. Sheen Easton, if you have an ad hoc, you're just gonna delay us being able to enter into an agreement. I mean, the motion's made, discuss this with the union, which I'll do. I think you won the issue here, so why delay?
Good point.
Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item twenty-one, please.
BRT tax assessment deferral across the street.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make our, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we send this to an ad hoc committee with, uh, Corporation Council representatives from Western Connecticut State University, representatives from your office, and representatives from BRT.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Riley, Councilman Nagasheth, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item twenty-two is consent. Item twenty-three, please.
Purchase of property fifty-one A, East Lake Road.
It's a pleasure, Council. Oh, Commissioner Nagasheth's gonna read the report for the council? Okay. Mr. Nagasheth?
Thank you, Your Honor. Honorable Mark D. Batlin, Mayor, common council members. February twentieth, two thousand and seven. Chairman Trumbetta called the meeting to order at five P.M. In attendance were committee members Councilman Shae Nagasheth, Councilman Dwayne Perkins, Eric Gotchak, Assistant Corporation Counsel, Colin Burke, Tax Assessor. Mr. Trumbetta read the charge of the committee, which is a continuation to review the request for purchase of fifty-one A, East Lake Road. A positive recommendation of purchase had been received from the Planning Commission and the Director of Public Works. An updated appraisal dated February third, two thousand and seven, in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars has been received from Ronald Struski of Noche Associates. Mr. Perkins stated that the Democratic Common Council submitted a request to create an ad hoc committee to establish an ordinance to evade the concrete tax and what would, what that would do in exchange for the land based on transferring the development rights, conservation, and other types of right-of-way issues to the city in exchange. Mr. Radchowski would get to keep the property in the family, provide a buffer, and keep the East Lake, uh, area pristine. Mr. Radchowski stated that he, that he is looking to absolve himself from the parcel. He feels it is a very valuable parcel to the city offered at a reasonable price. Mr. Nagasheth asked that, based on the new appraisal, would Mr. Radchowski give consideration to selling the parcel to the city? Mr. Radchowski replied that he would need to speak with Mrs. Radchowski then report back to the committee. Attorney Gotchak stated that if a recommendation were made to the council to purchase the parcel after Mr. Radchowski had a chance to speak with his wife, a vote would have to be taken. Mr. Trumbetta stated that based on the positive reports he has, if the thirty-five thousand dollars is approved by the common council and is accepted by Mr. Radchowski, he would be inclined to recommend the purchase of the parcel as open space. Mr. Nagasheth asked for clarification on the recommendation of the committee to the common council, not knowing if the Radchowskys would be willing to accept the offer of thirty-five thousand dollars. Attorney Gotchak replied that based, uh, that it has happened in the past that the council has authorized the purchase of a parcel without knowing what the other party to the transaction wants to do. The committee can vote to recommend purchase and Mr. and Mrs. Radchowski can make the decision to send a letter to the council. Based on the facts and the positive recommendations before the committee, Mr. Nagasheth moved that the council, at its regularly scheduled meeting, exercise its option to purchase fifty-one A, East Lake Road for the revised appraisal value of thirty-five thousand dollars, seconded by Mr. Trumbetta. Motion passed with Mr. Trumbetta and Mr. Nagasheth voting in favor and Mr. Perkins opposed. Mr. Nagasheth moved to return, uh, the meeting at five twelve P.M. Motion seconded by Mr. Perkins. Motion passed unanimously. Respectfully submitted by Charles Trumbetta, Chair, Ms. Dwayne Perkins, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbetta and Mr. Nagasheth. I will just make a note for the council. Mr. Radchowski's wife did say okay, that she would accept the thirty-five thousand dollars. With that, it's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Batta?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the committee's recommendations to purchase the property at fifty-one A, East Lake Road, pending, uh, certification of the funds from the Director of Finance.
Question made, seconded. Mr. Perkins?
Yeah, just, uh, where in the debate? Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to say, uh, just to acknowledge the efforts of the, uh, other council members, Chairman Trumbetta, Shay Nagasheth, for just doing a thorough job and, uh, being diligent. I just want to say that I was hoping to have a more clear, comprehensive plan that would address issues of open space. And a lot of the reasoning that we went through this process was because, uh, didn't really want to set a precedence that would have people thinking that the council would, uh, the city tax dollars to help them out of, you know, inopportune land deals that they found themselves in. So that was my thought process pretty much throughout the entire, um, committee meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any other discussion about this motion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Let's do a roll call here, just to make sure. Madam Clerk, do a roll call, please.
McMahon? Nagasheth? Trumbetta? Perkins? Visconti? Chinis? Esposito? Sadi? Cavo? Basso? Rotello? Diggs? Caish, um, Consumpus? Riley? Saraceno? Seaberry? Stanley? Tabersek?
No.
Eleven, yes.
There being eleven yes, seven no, motion passes. Mr. President, department reports, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports as all members have copies. Copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
Second.
Question made, seconded by Councilman Nagasheth. Discussion of their department reports. Mr. Tabersek, start at the end and then move to our side.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Director of Finance. The, um, Special Services District Tax Levy, is that, does that a- District tax levy, does that apply to all, is that levied on all properties in the Special Service District?
All properties that are not exempt properties.
Excuse me?
All properties that are not exempt properties.
What is an exempt property?
An exempt property is a property that's not subject to taxes. It could be owned by the State of Connecticut, it could be...
Can I ask you whether or not the 30 Crosby Street is subject to the Special Service tax?
I'm not sure that's in the district.
It is. It is in the district. It is subject to the tax.
It is subject to the tax.
And let me just say that, does the Director of Finance have a report on your department reports?
I do. No, I do not.
No. So, Mrs. Tabersek, your honor...
Your Honor, I believe the memorandum is from Mrs. DiOrio.
Mrs. Tabersek, your questions been answered. There's nothing on here about 30 Crosby Street in the...
There is something on our agenda in her report here about the Special Service District.
Right, that's in the beginning of the agenda, and that was taken off consensus. If you wanted to ask questions then, you could have, but nobody wanted to ask any questions, so now we're at the end of the agenda, and here we are. Further discussion.
I do have another question, not to the Director of Finance. This is really in regard to the housing partnership. I was very surprised at the swiftness of getting the Charles Ives Center authority approved and getting all these appointments. I really think it's like three months, a hearing, a meeting, and they're on. And it's been a year since we adopted the ten-year plan to end homelessness, and I'd like to know, Your Honor, when you might be appointing people to the housing partnership.
Well, first of all, the housing partnership's not on department reports. Mrs. Tabersek, you have to keep your comments to stuff that's in department reports. But having said that, some of those appointments have already been made. They don't come to the council. You don't have to ratify them, and there's already been discussions with key members of that partnership, and within the next probably three to four weeks, we'll be conducting our first meeting.
Is this prohibited information from the council? Would you be willing to share your appointments with council members who would like to know?
Those appointments are public record. You certainly can have a copy of them when they're in the convention. Further discussion. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be as brief as possible. This past Sunday, we paid homage to two Danbury firefighters who were killed in the line of duty, and I'd just like to thank Chief Curran and his staff in the Fire Department, and Chris Ryan, the President of Local Ada One, along with Lutimichi, past president, for putting on a very moving testament to those two people. And also, I would like to include Chief Baker and his staff and the volunteer fire department in Danbury for the turnout that they had and taking care of the traffic situation. It was just an all-around terrific effort, and I'd just like to thank them. Thank you.
All set, council. All set, council. Further discussion, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. To the chair, please. Rechan Antos, Coordinator, Department of Labor Assistance.
Mr. Antos?
Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to say to you and your team that after reading your report and knowing what you've been doing, your team, for the last six months, seven months, whatever, maybe a little longer, I thank you for your report. It is very precise, and I see also that you've been making a lot of headways under very trying conditions, and I just wanted to recognize you and your team are doing an outstanding job. But as you read the report, you notice too that we seem to, when we say "we," all of us together, with your efforts and your team, to be bringing these apartments into compliance. I know that you wrote that three of the apartments who were out of compliance are now back in compliance to the regs or whatever you saw that was wrong with that. So I think it's a well, it's operating very well. I think that, and I know that you should be commended and your team be commended for your efforts, and I know, again, that it's very difficult, and sometimes you probably get down on yourself, but I thank you for, again, doing everything you can do, because in the long run, it comes down to saving lives, and thank you very much.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate the opportunity to be out there and make the city a safer place and a quality of living. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Antos? Further discussion, Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to take a moment, excuse me, to offer my thanks from an issue that took place at Danbury High School to Superintendent Alonso. He took a personal interest in something that wasn't working properly and remedied the situation in a quick and early fashion. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Seaberry, further discussion. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Mr. Siney and Mr. Sheeney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, not at, well, it's generally with regard to departmental reports, but just so I understand, the limitations on commenting on the departmental reports, as was pointed out by yourself by, to Councilman Tabersek, is it that a specific item must be referenced within a departmental report or that which is within the jurisdiction of that particular department? I just want to be clear, because very often, significant latitude is provided to council members with regard to these types of issues. I know you did respond, but I'm trying to understand just what the parameters are here.
Generally, we'll give some latitude towards the council people that may have a generalized question. As a rule of thumb, though, it must be referenced within the report, but if there's a follow-up question that somebody might want to ask, we'll certainly do that. At some point, those questions become dilatory in the conduct of our meetings, and obviously, a lot of those discussions can be had offline in the other 29 days that we're not meeting in terms of policy procedures, general macro kind of conversations. So as a rule of thumb, we try to keep it to what's in the report. However, I do give some latitude from time to time, and even in the case of Mrs. Tabersek's comments, we certainly got our questions answered, at least in terms of what her concerns were.
Thank you. Just to follow up, I generally functioned under the understanding that it was to discuss issues which were within the cognizance of the department. We can talk more about that offline, but I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Mr. Sheeney.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say thank you to Dina DiOrio. I think this will be the last council meeting for her. I just want to say thank you for her time here. I know I didn't get to work with her that long, only 11 months, but during those 11 months, from one accountant to another, you know, I did go through the numbers in detail, and she'd finally be very professional and well laid out, so I just want to wish her the best in her new job in North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeney. Well said. Further discussion on department reports. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, signify by saying nay. I-7 motion carries unanimously. Mr. President?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add item number 27 to the agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any, almost in favor of adding item 27 to the agenda? Please signi, uh, excuse me, Mr. Riley? Yes, okay. Item 27, Mr. Cabo.
Item 27 would be the addition of the five new firefighters appointed to the Danbury Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Cabo. Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion about adding item 27? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. At this time, Mr. Cabo, go ahead with 27.
Honorable members of the Common Council, City of Danbury, here, common council members. I hereby submit to your confirmation of the appointment of the following five individuals to the position of firefighter. Mr. Nate Chapin, 151 Chapin Road, New Milford, Connecticut. Mr. Chapin graduated from New Milford High School in New Milford, Connecticut. Mr. Chapin currently works in carpentry and has been a volunteer firefighter in New Milford for the past four years. Mr. Jonathan DeJoseph, 16 Bryan Road, Danbury, Connecticut. Mr. DeJoseph graduated from Amancio High School in Danbury, Connecticut. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and criminology from the University of Maryland, College Park, Maryland. Mr. DeJoseph currently works as a 911 dispatcher for the Southbury Police Department. He has been a volunteer firefighter in Danbury for the past 10 and 1/2 years. Mr. Patrick Heron, 121 Bryan Road, Street, Danbury, Connecticut. Mr. Heron graduated from Amancio High School in Danbury, Connecticut. He also attended Western Connecticut State University in Danbury, Connecticut, taking courses in accounting and political science. He currently works at Western Connecticut State University. Mr. Kenneth Stilson III, 5 Golden Hill Lane, Danbury, Connecticut. Mr. Stilson graduated from Amancio High School in Danbury, Connecticut, and attended Western Connecticut State University in Danbury, taking courses in criminal justice. He has owned his own landscaping and snowplow business for the past year. Mr. Stilson has also worked as a volunteer firefighter for the past five years. Mr. Doug Zanowski, Pendleton Drive, Seymour, Connecticut. Mr. Zanowski graduated from Seymour High School in Seymour, Connecticut. He holds a bachelor's degree in file investigation from the University of New Haven in Connecticut, New England, Connecticut, and currently works as a fire rescue and heat and heating guild for it. Mr. Zanowski has been a volunteer firefighter since the age of 14. Thank you for your consideration of these appointments. Sincerely, I do bow to you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Spassa?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and approve the appointment of Nate Chapin, Jonathan DeJoseph, Pat Heron, Kenneth Stilson, and Doug Zanowski to the position of firefighters.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman Saraceno. Any discussion about the appointments? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I-7 motion carries unanimously. This time, I'll extend all committees, and I will replace the three committees that were appointed in February, items 27, 29, and 30. I'm going to replace Councilwoman Taischel, who we all have in our prayers as she's undergoing treatment with Councilman Johnson. And of course, he's not here tonight, but he agreed to do it, so he'll be here for the ad hocs. We certainly wish Councilwoman Taischel the best, and I would be remiss if I didn't say anything about Dina. I'm going to miss you. You did a great job here in the city, and we know you're going to be all warm all the time now down there in North Carolina, but we certainly wish you the best, and we're very, very happy for you and Robert. Obviously, we're sad to see you go, but we thank you for this budget, and we thank you for the time you put in over the next several years.